Yeah.
Yeah.
Roll call. Sandra?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
George?
Yeah.
Joe?
Here.
Colleen?
Here.
And... Who's not here?
Zappa.
Mark. Is he coming?
I assumed he was. In fact, I saw, I thought I saw his car out there earlier, but I didn't evidently.
His car car? Looks just like my car.
Well, there were, oh, really?
Which actually you're in my car car.
Your car car?
Do you also have a truck truck?
Car car?
It comes from my foot!
Car car.
And the motorcycle goes.
You've got the Audi, is that it? The black Audi. I thought that was his.
Oh, mine's navy.
Navy blue, yeah. Does he still have one?
All right. Chairman entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last board meeting.
So moved.
Any comments or corrections? All favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Comments from the floor? Plan Commission?
Good evening.
Good evening, Michael. How are you? Good.
Ladies and gentlemen, Plan Commission. We had rather uneven meeting last month. Did they have a conditional use permit application for AC land maintenance?
Very routine. Sound nice, quiet company. Didn't make a lot of noise, no objections from the neighbors, and we pass it on to you for recommendation for approval.
Good.
On your minutes, it says there's a request for escrow reduction on heart extraterritorial CSM. We did not discuss that last month. We, it was just brought up in routine business that it'll be coming up this coming month.
Okay.
So we have nothing to report on that.
Where exactly is that property located?
I...
We have a lot of people who know.
Which I'm having about our, our location. That is off of Kirkwood Way, uh, the 10th Street, the new development, the new Derfens Development. It's Kirkwood Way, so it's up against the property, and then it's just north of that.
Okay. So the Plan Commission hasn't put forth a recommendation yet?
We haven't seen anything. We haven't heard it. We'll be getting that on the February 21st meeting.
Okay.
And we'll be looking at the packet Cedar Corp puts together for us.
The Chairman entertain a motion to approve the conditional use permit for AC land maintenance?
Yes.
Oh, so move. A move we recommend approval.
One second.
Okay. Any other questions on that one?
Is it down in a 240? Is that down in a railroad yard?
The other order of business we had as a Plan Commission was, as you know, you had approved the final, um... The comprehensive plan, and we, we got word that the state had approved it. And one of the recommendations in the comprehensive plan that you approved was that, once a year, we should revisit it.
Yep.
So as a Plan Commission, we decided that, and we'll discuss it later in the year, but we thought, by about October of each year, we'll invite all the committees to discuss their goals in the comprehensive plan. And come to Plan Commission, we'll talk about it.
That's a great idea.
And we have something to pass on to you. It gives you enough time to do something before the year is over.
I was gonna even suggest September.
Okay. We, we kicked that around, and we said, as we get a little closer, we'll bring that up.
The only reason I say that is to the extent that there's any budget implications. October literally is too...
Okay. That's a good point. I'll bring that up then.
Okay. Okay.
And that's all we had.
All right. All in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use permit for AC land signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Were these two gentlemen here from AC land? Is that the one we just approved?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Okay.
A little sidebar on the comprehensive plan. I saw notes in here as I read through this, and I really think it is a great idea, as you mentioned, to just make little notes of improvements, typos, anything that we can do to make this clear. It's a fantastic, just a fantastic plan. Just with a couple little things that, as you go through it, I think will be fun to sort of...
And what we thought is nice, the way it's laid out, is we have some goals, recommendations, things to strive for in the back of each chapter, and that's something we'll be able to look at. So you don't have to page through the whole book. And so each, each committee can look at that and see how they're doing and what they would like to do differently.
Okay. And just to reconfirm, we're not gonna be taking any action on the escrow reduction?
Correct.
Tonight. Okay. All right. Uh, for finance, thank you, Michael. Chairman entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Move we approve the December non-recurring claims totaling $20,704.89, and also the January non-recurring claims totaling $17,678.85.
One second.
Any questions on the claims? If not, we'll do roll call votes. Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George? All right, yes. Okay. All right. Item B was the item that was, uh, I put it on the agenda because I wasn't sure if it should be there or not, but just in terms of bringing people up to speed on that. The language in the loan that we took out last year was not as appropriate and accurate as it should be. And so the bank has agreed to just write a letter of understanding clarifying that. So they'll be sending that to us over the next couple of days. Okay? Board action isn't required. The terms and conditions don't change. Doesn't have any financial implications, so... All right. Then we have the review and selection of loan bids. Uh, that would be for the...
Mr. Squirt Car.
Squirt Car.
A move we accept a loan bid from the River Bank for $34,200 with a 5% fixed rate over a two-year repayment schedule, two installations per, excuse me, two installments per year beginning in 2008, with no prepayment penalties.
I would second that.
Any comments or questions? Okay, since that is a spending decision, we'll do a roll call. Joe?
Yep.
Colleen?
Yes.
Sandra? Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
All right, yes. Okay. Village Hall addition. Options, discussions, and possible action. I'd asked Sean Ayler, who I think most of us know from Ayler's, or Sean Lenz from Ayler's Associates. Last month, when we were talking about the need to obviously borrow funds so we can start construction, simple question was, we don't know exactly how much we're gonna have to borrow, per se. We know what the upper limit of the project was. We know we've got some amount of money in the bank that we can be using. And we've also got a couple of fudge factors built into the total cost, okay? And we sure don't wanna borrow, we don't wanna go and commit to borrowing more money than we need, okay? So the question was, what are the various options and ways of looking at that? So Sean, I'll just let you deal with that.
Thank you. Got one quick... Everybody hear me all right, or is it? Okay, great, great.
No, I can't hear you.
Is it? Yeah. It gets too loud. Let me go.
I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Larry's introduction was, I think, covered all the points. He and Gloria had also called us as you were starting to explore options with financing the Village Hall. And I had mentioned a couple of things to them that are always an issue with financing Village Hall improvements with the way the Wisconsin statutes are for borrowing for this type of a project. And after our sit-down meeting a couple of weeks ago, we thought it would be a good educational deal to come out and just talk about this and then kinda see where the board wanted to go. So I'm gonna go through the, the handout, but as I do, please feel this, feel free to stop me, and we'll take questions right away. First off, I just wanted to mention the starting point. Almost everybody, when they're do, and by everybody, I mean communities, when they're looking at doing financing for this types of, type of project, are looking to use general obligation debt. And general obligation debt, in broad terms, is your best and strongest credit that you can offer to the market. If you were to look at the Wisconsin statutes, it's Chapter 67 where it details all the different outlines with it. But there are a couple different forms, and here's where some of the potential misunderstanding with general obligation debt can come in. It, it really, in broad terms, can come in the form of what is called a bond, which is really debt that's longer than 10 years in length, or a note, a promissory note, which is general obligation debt in a 10-year or less term. And then a third option, which is a kind of an in-between and a nuance, is the state has their own loan program with, which they call the State Trust Fund Loan Program through the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. And that has its own set of rules as well. So that's the other option that is out there.
Okay, so that is an independent source?
It, it is. It, it is general obligation debt. But when you look at the statutes, it falls under a different category in terms of the references that you go to when you would do it.
So you could borrow funds from the State Trust Fund for 20 years?
You can.
And it would not be considered a bond?
That is really subject to attorney's general opinion, and I'll actually hit on that point, Larry, as we talk about the four options that we've got. Now, just one other nuance I put it to, when you're thinking about a loan, I think you, you were just talking about a loan that you guys approved today for the River Bank. Generally, the, the thought is, well, okay, it's, it's a loan. What is it when you track it to the statute? It's a note. That's really what it is. It's a general obligation promissory note. So it has a 10-year or less term. So that's really what you're issuing generally when you do like a local bank loan. It's a general obligation promissory note. Okay? Just briefly, the other, next couple pages are on a little bit more looking into notes and bonds. With notes, very, very flexible, you can use it, notes, to finance almost any municipal-type capital improvement or refund any municipal obligation. Very wide market, local banks, national buyers, very wide market. A very, pretty much streamlined and easy process for the issuance. The one main restriction is the 10-year term. You cannot have a term with a note issued that goes longer than 10 years. Okay? And I should mention on that, that's not to say that you can't do a note and then extend it. You can do that for a total of 20 years, but the initial issuance, 10 years. Now, bonds...
Sean, if I may interrupt you with that question, that, it sounds good right up front. It says, oh, we can extend it another 10 years, but when you go to your bank, we'll use the term "bank", and they give you this 10-year note, and it seems very flexible, they figure out an amortization rate based on the 10 years. Now I go to them at the end of 10 years, and what am I really asking them to do? Because I've still, I've been paying for 10 years on the basis of that amortization rate. Doesn't that change then?
It, it very well may. It really would depend on what the market is in that 10th year. Let's, just as an example, if you had a loan with your bank in the form of a note, and it was going to be a 10-year, and you guys agree on a set rate of 5%. 10 years from now, when, let's say there's a balloon payment, because you've been amortizing it like you're gonna pay it in 20 years, when you go to them at that point and you say, well, I'd like to extend it. How about that 5%? Well, if, if the market's 4%, they'll, they may say, great, let's keep it at 5%. But if the market is at 6%, they're gonna say, well, I'll extend it, but it's got a, the new rate's gonna have to be 6%.
Well, you did touch on my answer, on my question a little bit, but I was thinking, if I've gone to the bank and said I want it amortized over 10 years, theoretically, at the end of 10 years, I've paid off that loan, haven't I?
Correct. Yep. And that would be the case. If you have a fixed rate for 10 years, no balloon payment, but full amortization be paid off at the end of 10 years.
Okay.
Okay, on page four, again, this is going to the statutes, we would move from notes to bonds. Now, the process for issuing bonds or debt that goes up to 20 years, and you, you would have a fixed schedule for that 20 years right as you do the initial issuance. The process for you as a village or for a city, county, anybody doing that, is more onerous. There's more steps involved. The other, the other part that is involved with it is, instead of being open to almost any type of municipal project, that there's a laundry list of things which you can use bonds to finance. Some things are on that list, some things are not on that list. The one noticeable item that is not on that list is Village Hall or City Halls. Street improvements, sewer improvements, library improvements, water improvements, all on that list. For some reason, Village Halls or City Halls are not on that list. You'd have to check with the legislature as for, for why that, that is the case. Another requirement is, with bonds, you need to do a competitive sale. Have a competitive process for offering the sale of your, of your bonds. And even the projects that are on the list are subject to what we call a reverse referendum. So the process for the village, let's just use a hypothetical for a street project. It's on the list to do bonds. If the board felt that's the route they wanted to go, you as a board would need to approve an initial resolution. And then you allow a 30-day period, which is called the reverse referendum period, where a petition could be filed that would require you, and if you wanted to issue those bonds, to hold a referendum. Now, if a project is not on the list for bonds, you do need to have, you, you can still use bonds, but you've gotta do a referendum to be able to get there. So that would be the one nuance for your Village Hall project. As an example, if you hold a referendum and it follows the steps required for the issuance of bonds, you could still do bonds for a Village Hall. Okay? All right. If we can go to five, I just wanted to touch on your project, then we'll talk about where I see your options right now, and I'll talk a little bit about the referendum that I know you did do last November for this project. Projected budget, and I think, Larry, at the front end, you talked about that you don't have the final numbers, and you're not set in stone on what it's going to be.
We haven't got any bids, George.
Correct.
Yep, at this point. It was about $760,000. I think that's what you had your referendum for last, last fall.
An amount not to exceed.
Not to exceed $760,000. Yep, thank you. Thank you. And you have, as I understand, somewhere around $140,000, $145,000 that you've set aside and passed budgets for the project. Your ongoing bidding process, and you'll yet to get the, the final numbers on that. Okay? Now, you as a village did do a referendum because you have another hurdle that's built into your structure for capital improvements, that hurdle being that you, you have as part of your ordinance, $150,000 or larger capital projects need to go through a referendum process. You did that, and I understand that was approved. The, the one, the one difference, though, when we tie it to whether the village desires to use bond financing for this project, is that your process for the referendum is, is following your ordinance, but it's not in sync with what is required for a referendum process for bonds, for the issuance of bonds. So that really was the, the gist of our original discussion with Gloria. And Larry, as I think, you certainly have a passed, had a referendum passed, but because of there's more statutory requirements and specific requirements for a referendum to be able to issue bonds, that somewhat changes what options you have for the long-term financing of this project. Okay? Does that, does that make sense to everybody? Just, it's, it's just the way the statutes are written. It's kind of a nuance that, you know, it only comes up if you're really doing this sort of a, of a project. Well, let's talk about then, what, what options would be available to you for putting together the long-term financing for the Village Hall renovations. The first option is general obligation promissory notes. Those are certainly an option available to the village. You would be limited to a 10-year repayment period on the notes. But if you wanted to, you could set it up with an amortization over 20 years with the idea that at some point along the line, you knew you'd have to re, refund it and extend it. Depending on how you'd set up the note, though, you could have it be prepayable somewhere along the line, or you could be putting away extra funds somewhere with the idea that maybe you have a balloon, but maybe you would have funds available to, to pay that off in the 10th year. So you'd have a number of different ways that you could explore that in, in using general obligation promissory notes. A second option would be, you could do a...
But even on number one, realistically, what you would most likely do is, or at least try to negotiate with whoever's gonna be the source, so you'd have a 10-year note with a 20-year amortization schedule with in essence, an automatic, and then a balloon payment at the end of 10, but then there's an automatic refinancing, most likely, presumably at the same interest rate.
Yes, now...
So it becomes a question of how well do you negotiate on the front end.
Exactly. Yep. And, and what I point out is, the purchaser, if you're saying to them, we want a 10-year note, but we wanna really lock into a 20-year amortization, they're going to say, there, there'll be some premium you need to pay for that back 10 years, or they're going to obviously price in some risk, so that if they have debt out for 20 years, they know they're being compensated on where the market is for that debt, just like if you were bidding it for 20 years right out.
Okay.
Okay? A second option, and I think, I, I don't know that this is really a, a good idea, but it certainly is something that would be out there, is you could do a second referendum that is specific to the issuance of bonds for this project. If the board felt that a 20-year financing is the direction you wanted to go. There's no reason you couldn't do that. Whether you'd want to, you know, that's really a policy decision, but that, that is an option. Now, a third option, and I've seen this also done in a number of opt, another, a number of communities because it, it is, it's, it's dealing with the, the desire to have an exact amount for what you actually issue in bonds, and it also is dealing with this bond requirement and some of the nuances of that law. Another approach would be that during the construction phase of the Village Hall, while you're getting the bids and while you're finding out whether you need to use potentially some contingency that you'd have in the construction, you could issue a general obligation promissory note, maybe with a one-year amortization or potentially even shorter, with the idea that you were gonna either get those funds and then use the dollars as the construction's going along. Or another approach is, maybe you say to the banks, we'd like to draw the dollars down on an as-needed basis as we get construction invoices coming in. So up to a not-to-exceed number. And one, once you were at the point that you knew exactly what you needed, at that point, you could issue what are called general obligation refunding bonds. Now, refunding bonds can go up to 20 years, or really 20 years from the date you issued the original note. And they're not subject to all the same requirements that what we call new money bonds are. So you're not subject to referendum requirements, or really any of the other requirements associated with issuing bonds initially. So another approach that the village could consider is, is having your cash on hand plus some sort of a short-term note while you're in the construction phase with the idea that once all of that is completed, you would put everything together into a bond. At that point, you'd know the exact amount that you're dealing with, and you'd structure a 20-year repayment at that time. Tom?
Sean, if you're looking at doing something like that, is there the potential to take other notes, other general obligation notes that are out there for the village, so you combine it all into kind of one long-term?
Yep. Yep. And, and actually, you know, that's a good point, Tom. It reminds me that that's what we did in 2004. As you recall, we were looking at a number of issues. The, the village at that time had debt issues that were set up, some real short, some a little bit longer. And we were looking at trying to deal with some tax rate issues and overall tax burden issues. We put everything together into a general obligation refunding bond at that time. Okay, the fourth option, and the last option, is looking to use that State Trust Fund Loan Program. And the loan program, they vary their rates occasionally, but they're, they've been set at this level for, Brian, it's gotta be a couple of months now for sure. Yeah, it's even, yeah, longer than it. This program, again, it's, falls under a different statutory language, different chapter, but they do offer loans, 5, 10, and up to 20 years. I had a preliminary call-in to them about whether they would do a Village Hall project and whether they feel that all the same referendum requirements that pertain to bonds pertain to their loan program. The representative that I talked to said that they thought they could do it. Not 100% sure, but they thought they could do it. I've also talked with my coworkers in my Brookfield office about whether anybody has gone down this road before. This, this is an option, if you look at the interest rates, these interest rates are higher than what you are gonna get in a competitively bid issue out on the market. As I see it right now, the 550 for up to 20 years, I think is about, oh, maybe a percent above the market, somewhere in that range. Yeah, maybe even more. So this usually isn't the first option for this type of project. In also talking with some of my coworkers, they've been down this road before with a community, and they ran into problems when it got to the Attorney General's Office, who has to review all State, State Trust Fund loans. They felt that a referendum was required with a project in a different community. Now, whether they have changed, you never know, and I think they view these on a case-by-case basis. The other issue is, they may look at your issue a little differently in that you did have a referendum on this project. You didn't have one following the bond statutory requirement, but you did have one. There's no question about that. So this is an option, but I do think, given where interest rates are, you do pay a higher rate with this option the way rates are right now. Okay? So I think the, the, and I don't open up for any questions at this point. Really, the, the decision for the board is, which route you think makes the most sense for where you'd like to go with this? And then certainly, you can look at a number of different options in terms of getting the, the final rates set and the terms set on the note or bond, once you get to that stage.
Sean, you know, if, if you look at the 10-year note and do a 20-year amortization, and some of the trade-off there is, if you, if you're doing a bond, you've got some issuance costs and some things that you've gotta put together with that. If you're doing the note, you probably don't have as much of that type of thing. But then, then it's the issue that Larry brought up of whether, you know, what you can negotiate as to what's gonna happen at the balloon point in time. And you've got, so you've got the bonds out here, you've got the kind of the notes in the middle, and then you've got the trust fund that's kind of out here on, on the other end. And the goal, it would seem to me, from, from the village's standpoint, is just, what can they negotiate? Maybe just with area banks as far as a note would be concerned with respect to the terms you could get on a 10-year with a 20-year amortization, and what that balloon term's gonna be, or what the terms are gonna be as far as when, when you do that. And then comparing that to the fourth alternative of, or I guess the third one on here of, do your, do kind of your typical construction loan, make your draws, get to the end, figure out what it is, and then roll that. I don't know what the village has for other debt that, maybe if they just did that, the other stuff is kinda taken care of. But, and then roll it into a, into a refunding bond at that point. And kind of the trade-off there is, again, you may get, you're probably gonna get a better interest rate, I would think, in that situation than you are negotiating with the bank, but then you're just gonna have some trade-off on the issuance costs and those things. Okay?
Yep. No, I think those are all, all good points. The one thing we're seeing right now in the market for bonds, which make them pretty attractive right now, is the, the yield curve. So the, the term for interest rates and where it's moving is very, very flat. So we're seeing, and a lot of issues that are bidding out 20 years, we're seeing 4% or just above 4%. You're really just below 4% in the first five years, and you're just barely above 4% out 20 years. So it's a very flat yield curve right now, and you're not really paying much of a premium in the current market condition for going up to 20 years. Where in past years, we've seen, and actually, interest rate environment was great, '04 when we did this, but the first couple of maturities, I think we're down around 2%. And then the 15 or 18 years out, I think those were more toward 4%. So there was quite an incline over that 20-year period. Right now, it's very, very flat.
Give me a timeline, a schedule as to when we begin as a board to, actually, we have begun. You have given us these options in this presentation. I guess my question is, we are now working with the, with the architect. We haven't even come up with a floor plan yet. When has it become imperative that the board makes a decision which way to go? Do we, as, as we are conferring with you now, I'm sure we're going to be conferring with you more in the near future. But give me a sense of the timelines as to when, what we need to do and when we need to do it.
Yeah. You have cash in hand, which certainly can help with your timeline and... Uh, you have cash in hand, which certainly can help with your timeline in terms of dealing with costs that you're getting right now, which I'm sure you're getting some during this design phase. I would say-
Haven't gotten the bill yet, Sean.
Okay, okay. Well, the first, the first, if we call it like a pressure point, would be at the time that you've exhausted those funds,
Oh, I see.
Uh, you certainly need to have that second, uh, source of funding in place. So, um, whether that be a month or two out, uh, I think, you know, that, maybe it's three months out. At some point, you'll exhaust the hundred-some-thousand that you've got set aside. I think that you could, uh, if you're doing a, the route of locking into a, a note, a sh- something on a short-term basis, a year during the construction phase, you could probably, uh, start that process at any point now to get that settled, if that was the option that the village wanted to go down. You'd have that in place to pay for all of your costs through the remaining construction phase. And then, once you got to the end, uh, during the construction phase, I think you'd continue to talk about, are we going to take it out with a bond? And how long is that bond going to be? So that once you know your final numbers, you're set to go, you get bids on those bonds, and you lock into a, a long-term rate at that point.
How long does that process take of when you begin to solicit for those bonds until you get them?
Yeah, normally, uh, is, is I'll, I'll use our two thousand four example, just as a, as a starting point. Uh, what, what we usually would do is at a, a village meeting, we'd say, here's the plan, let's get authorization to move ahead. And then at your next village meeting, there would be bids, uh, for which you could react to at that point.
Do you reckon three, four weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, because, um, I think it's premature at this time to even take a guess at what the construction costs are going to come in at.
Yep.
Um, I am sure that the money that, uh, is in, in the bank right now is adequate for paying the architect's ongoing monthly fees, and we haven't gotten any of them yet. And I, just my own gut tells me, let's wait until we begin to get a better sense of what the construction cost is going to be, before we go out and begin to advertise for, for bonds.
Yep.
If I'm wrong on that, uh-
No, the-
Let me know.
It's, it's like anything else, um, the, the, the real risk, if you want to call it that, is where would interest rates go, uh, from this point? You know, we know where they are today, where would they be, uh, five, six months from now? But, uh, that being said, things have been pretty good, I think Brian would agree with me that the market's been pretty good. There's even been some discussion about cutting rates, uh, short-term rates, who knows where that'll go. Uh, they certainly, if I were to show you a historical, uh, twenty-five-year chart, we're at a very, very low point, historically speaking, for interest rates. And I don't think there's anything for sure saying they're going to be skyrocketing in the near future.
By the same token, I don't want to have, start to go to a banker and he says, well, how much money do you want? I said, well, I don't know.
Yeah, right, it's nice to, Bill, to tell them exactly what you want, yeah.
Yeah, it could be five hundred thousand, it could be six hundred thousand, we'll come back when you know.
But as a practical matter, we are, I mean, hey, I'm, I'm working off the assumption that's why you do like a line of credit, a short-term note.
Typical in a commercial and a construction loan situation, yields, let's say we've got this, we're authorized for seven sixty.
Yeah.
And you'll enter into a construction loan agreement with, with the bank, and they're going to advance you the money. You, they don't know what it's going to be, but they say that it's going to be seven sixty, and they'll agree to term it out at whichever point, when you get to the completion of the project, when you meet those criteria, and do it that way. So I, I think you do have, that is an option, that you do have the flexibility to go to the bank and, and decide that.
Yep, so you would have a, a fixed rate for the, let's say it's a one-year, um, construction loan. You'd have a fixed rate on that, you could, you potentially, if they're willing to agree to it, you could say, charge us interest as we draw. So if you draw a hundred thousand one month, you're starting to pay interest on that, another hundred thousand the next month. Uh, and you would have a, a, a set-in rate for at least that one-year period on that construction loan.
Just one, right, do we know, do we know approximately how long the construction period's going to be once we start construction? Is that a six-month, or is that a three-month, or is that a one-year, or do we know?
We would, the building management committee has made it clear to our architect that it is our goal to be in here in the new facility sometime in November.
Okay, so the idea would be is we'd start construction sometime in the spring, whenever that, as soon as we could do that, and we'd be done before things freeze over next fall. Okay. See, that, I think that that's, you know, that's a pretty narrow window, I mean, granted, things can, are, who knows what it's going to do on the interest rates, but at least, you know, it's not like we're looking at, you know, eighteen months from now, and, you know, the, the closer we are to kind of finalizing numbers, and I think the, the better, uh, it is to kind of, you know, you can wait and kind of, you know, see how things go along. And, uh, I don't know that you'd have to, uh, you know, push, you know, push to get things finalized until actually you're into construction, because if you've got a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars there, you're going to get the initial design stuff done by the architect, you're going to get your contract, you're going to have your bids, and you're going to be into building, you know, into your first draw, which is going to be thirty days after that. So, you know, soon you start April one, you're going to be into May sometime before you even draw on that first, you know, hundred thousand. The initial draw is probably going to be some demolition work and some excavation and foundation work. That isn't going to, you know, probably tip over all of that, so then you're into June really, before you have it. And then, you know, now you're talking only a three-month time period before, and it's kind of an easier time to look at what your options are to, to see what you want to do. But I, I think this is the appropriate time to kind of knowing that and looking at that, so, and, you know, Sean's really laid out nice the various options that you have. And as I look at it, I, it seems to me, you've got a note that you're going to do for ten years and amortize it over twenty, with some agreement as to what happens at the end of the ten, or you do kind of a construction loan, get the thing done, you're done, and, and you do a refunding bond and just do the twenty then, and, uh, you know, it's just, uh-
That's option three, as described.
Option in here, yes.
That's why, yep.
Yep.
Now, my question to the board, uh, it seems to me that, uh, the building management committee was originally set up with the idea that we would manage the actual construction of the job. And it seems to me that this is something that requires board work, board approval, board discussion. Or perhaps at the very minimum, the finance committee begins its work on this. But I see this as out of the, uh, out of the sphere of expertise from the building management committee, am I correct? And is that your perception?
You should be relieved of that responsibility.
I am very much relieved of that, Joe.
Your plate is full.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we understand.
Okay.
But it does make sense to me that this is something kind of the finance committee can weigh over and then come back and have Sean come back and kind of, you know, give you the opt, you know, if, if those are the two options, it's, it appears, then you can kind of balance those back and forth and get a recommendation from them to the finance committee and then to the board as to how that happens.
Any idea what bonds are going for these days for twenty years?
Yeah, we sold, um, an issue today for Prairie du Sac, which is about a two-million-dollar issue. Um, as you may recall, the village did get a bond rating last time, I'll just give you your credit history, and you're an A-two rated, it's a very good rating for a community your size. Uh, they were a little bit lower, but their, their debt, and I don't know if it was twenty years, I think it was a little bit shorter than that, was, uh, just right around four percent, I think, if I recall, right, right around four percent. Yep. And, and that was the other thing I was going to mention, is you may want to look at, um, really, as, as we looked at some preliminary numbers, the difference between, uh, fifteen and twenty years is pretty small, in terms of the annual debt service. And we may want to look at, again, the tax impact of, of this debt versus the, uh, uh, the total interest that you'd pay, and see, you know, where the, the, the village would like that number to be. You know, you really, when you do a loan like this, you're ju- you're, you're balancing, what is the mill rate impact, the impact on households from a proj- project like this? You're also looking at spreading the cost over the, everybody who's going to benefit over a long period of time. And you also look at the total interest potentially to be paid on, on a loan like this. And where, where does the board feel most, most comfortable that you're fitting into kind of how you view these issues from a policy standpoint? And what's most important to you, uh, in order to make those decisions? And I certainly think that could be part of what you decide as, as you, uh, move along the process.
It's not likely we would get a note for four percent from a bank, is there?
No, but in terms of using bonds, uh, just one little tidbit of information. I mean, w- would you want to go out and get a bond tomorrow? The answer is, I don't think so, because if you-
You don't know how much?
If you got a bond for, and say it turned out to be more dollars than you needed to build the project, those excess dollars then have to be used in a very specific way.
Yeah, I don't think we would do that either, but it would seem to me if we got a note from a construction loan, note from a bank, they would give us some time at the end, when we know how much money we would have, we'd pay interest on that money, obviously, until it's paid. We probably would have time at the end saying, okay, we need five hundred thousand dollars, it looks like. And we've paid out five hundred thousand dollars, and we might, they might give us, you know, we'd pay another six weeks' interest on that money until we could get a bond.
Yeah. Well, sort of one of the reasons why I think we need to proceed with getting the construction loans sooner rather than later, in my personal view, is although we're, we, we currently have the dollars that we can use to pay the architect's fees, I mean, those really should be built into the total cost of the project. Now, we know that there are going to be some items within the, within the project, like the furniture that we're talking about in finance, that we don't want to finance, those things over twenty years. So to the extent that we're taking that hundred, hundred forty, hundred forty-five thousand, I would not want us to see us spend that down to practically nothing in the short term.
And then get the loan.
And then get the loan, okay?
Yeah.
So the assumption would be, okay, if, if, let's assume it's six hundred thousand, that would then replace that one forty-five in the general fund.
But I think the loan you're talking about is more or less a line of credit, too.
Exactly.
So you just get a line of credit, you don't pay any interest on it until you decide, okay, we want to, we want to start drawing on that.
The bank may structure that thing to pay the interest monthly, or they just may say you pay the interest at the end of the term, too.
Yeah, yep.
Well, it doesn't sound like we have to take any action on that tonight.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We'll definitely be in touch. Thank you, that was very helpful.
Sean, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, Public Works.
I'd like to say that, uh, we didn't meet, so I have no report.
Okay. Public Safety?
You'll notice item B is the Village Hall Edition remodel update. If you'll pass, I have one of these, and pass that over to Kathy. Um, the building management, first of all, I'll start out by saying that the building management committee is made up of, uh, the following members, uh, Mark Ekblad is the supervisor of Public Works. We have, uh, Wally Gregerson, he's a former village board president. Um, I was elected as the chair, um, member of the Board of Trustees. Mark Richard is the chief of police, Gene Scheflin, former Board of Trustees member. Gloria Trester is the administrator clerk trustee. And although he's not a member of the committee, he is one we call on periodically, and that is Todd Zwievelhofer. He's with Elliott Architects, and he is our architect. The building management committee has met four times. We met Monday, January eighth, Thursday, January fifteenth, Thursday, January twenty-fifth, and Thursday, February first. Do you notice a pattern there? I'd like to just make it clear that at the first meeting that we had on January eighth, it was decided that we would be meeting Thursday mornings at eight o'clock. The public is invited to attend if you would like. Um, all meetings are from now on, actually, from, uh, Thursday, January fifteenth on. We're scheduling that we will meet every Thursday morning. Uh, if we don't have anything to discuss, which would be a big surprise to all of us, uh, then we'll, it's easier to cancel a meeting than it is to schedule one. The discussion topics have included, uh, the green grant. Uh, the response when we raised the question about the green grant was, and it can be initially expensive. It may have long-term, uh, value, long-term advantages, and, uh, Todd will be investigating this for us. Green grant simply is, um, can you build a building that isn't so environmentally friendly uh, that you can take advantage of the environment to heat and cool it, to use that as an example? And while the answer can be most definitely yes, the upfront cost for that can be prohibitive. So Todd is looking into that for us. Um, timelines, uh, at the last, at the, that would be the meeting of Thursday, January twenty-fifth. Elliot Anderson and Todd did attend the meeting for us, at which time they gave us, uh, their, uh, initial, uh, presentation on what the timelines were going to be. The committee looked them over and said, not aggressive enough. Can we move ahead a little bit faster? And the answer was, um, well, yeah, can you get me the floor plans? And what are your needs, and so on. So is, uh, be perfectly honest, I think a lot of the timeline hinges on how quickly the building management committee can react to input. So, a little update on that, um, Chief Richard had put together, uh, quite a comprehensive list of the needs and, uh, the needs for the police department. And, uh, Gloria and I see, and the chief is here, and I encourage him, invite him to come up to the microphone for any input on this. But you guys have met since last Thursday, you and Gloria, and, uh, they are working out the needs for that whole addition for their departments. Um, I think it'd be fair to say that the Department of Public Works, um, their needs are actually quite simple. He needs a room, and, and that's pretty much it. Um, I, oversimplifying, I've, I'm taking great risk at that, too, because, you know, there's more to it than just the room. Uh, the floor plan, my note here was, design is in the next step. Um, staff will present the requirements at our February eighth, uh, February eighth meeting.
I'm just curious, what was their timeline?
Oh, gee, interesting that you would ask that, I just happened to have under my EA folder. Uh, and I could, I could run through this, this is, this is quite a lengthy document, but I'll just give you the, uh, just the January, February. January twenty-fifth, BMC meeting, programming, rooms, sizes, functions, design features, uh, adjacencies, circulation criteria, design criteria, what are we trying to accomplish overall? Every one of those things that I just read had a question mark by it, so those are the things that we needed to answer. Um, February eighth, complete programming document. February eighth, public safety meeting, update slash report by BMC. This is going to be a busy week. But, uh, we're looking at, uh, by Thursday morning, we hope to be able to have Todd, Todd's planning on being here Thursday morning, and we will present to him the findings and needs from, uh, Gloria and from, uh, Mark. Uh, February eight, February twenty-second, BMC meeting, uh, review sketches of schematic design concepts. Um, that, that's one of the places we said, do you think maybe we could push that up a little bit? I think that was one of them, wasn't it? Uh, floor plan, site plan, and elevations. Uh, March eighth, BMC meeting, approve schematic design. Uh, floor plan, site plan, and elevations again, and also March eighth, public safety meeting. I think Todd just put that on there as, uh, for their own record. And then I'll just finish up with, uh, March, uh, March twenty-ninth, review design development drawings, floor plans, et cetera, mechanical, electrical, lighting, review infrastructure findings, recommendation. And it was moving into twelfth of April for, again, pretty much ex- not pretty much, it's almost exactly the same as the previous meeting. And then also, and I'll, well, I'll just end there. And that's what we were talking about, you've got to accelerate that. We don't want to be taking the entire month of March and the entire month of April before we, uh, or to finalize the plans. I see Mark is nodding. I captured that pretty good? All right. Uh, you're welcome to look this over if you'd like.
When, when did he see us starting construction?
Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah.
Finish it about December?
Yeah, June sixth was submittal by contractor slash village for building permit. Um, and it wasn't until the middle of June, meeting with, uh, BMC Architect Contractor, with, uh, construction concluding sometime in December. And we said, eh, you got to do a month better than that. So I have no doubt that we would be able to do it in our timeline, be able to have it done in, in November. Based on the, what I think was, and what the committee feels, was pretty stretched out for approving of the, uh, site plan. Other items that we've discussed, um, besides the, oh, the functional layout. Uh, the functional layout is what Elliott Architect will develop based on the input from the Building Management Committee. Payment process, Elliot Anderson will provide monthly invoices to Gloria by the twenty-fifth of each month to enable her to present the invoices to the Finance Committee each month. We don't want the invoices coming in on the first of the month, and and we wouldn't pay them until the following, so we'd always be a month and a year, so. They've agreed to adjust their billing cycle for us, so that they could get paid. Elliot Anderson has already been in discussion with the Hudson Cable Access. We want to ensure that whatever we do end up with meets their needs, so that we can continue to broadcast these meetings in living color, uh, so to speak. Uh, we also discussed surveying, parking, requirements for existing building for renovation, voter access and egress. And, uh, I'll just share with you, one of the things that we were talking about, that we're, I think we're, we're excited about is, as we renovate this facility, we want this to be more, and I'll, I'll use the term friendly, so that when people come in to vote, this looks like a really neat twenty-first century place to vote. Okay? One of the things we see is our customers coming in through those doors and leaving through this door. We renovate this so that this makes a nice exit, and so that it improves the traffic flow. Uh, I did use the word becau, uh, the word customer here, because it was a topic of discussion at the last meeting, and we talked about customer service. And we wanna make sure that this new facility is customer-friendly. Not only from the two or three times a year that people will come here to vote, but also when they come in to, uh, see the chief, or to see Gloria, or to pay a tax bill, or to get a permit. Those are our customers, and I had defined a customer as anyone who relies upon us for services. And so, jeez, to some, some extent, Tom, sometimes you're a customer. And we wanna make sure that when somebody comes into this door, comes into this building through our doors, that they feel like they're being treated as a, a good customer. And so, the design will meet that, those needs. And what I mean by that is, is you look behind, uh, behind us here, we have this window. Well, we'll make sure that we still have a, a modern window, that people can come in and, uh, be greeted, uh, right away. So, anyway, that's, that's where we are with the, the Building Management Committee, and, uh, we're finding that this is, uh, this is exciting, and it's a lot of work. There are a lot of details, and that's why I'm very pleased that you have recognized the need for the Board to take over dealing with the finances of this. We'll take care of the bricks and mortar, and you take care of the dollars and cents. Let's all throw it open to anybody if you have any questions.
Nope, you guys are doing a good job.
Well, you don't know that for sure, I've just been blowing a lot of smoke here, Larry.
Well, you're up and running.
Up and running, yes, we are. I think we have a very committed team, that's, uh, we each bring something to the table, it's a little bit different. And, and that's what's, that's what's making it exciting. Each of us is being, in, in effect, uh, forced to look at how somebody else does their work. And, uh, I wanna make sure that this is a place, this is me talking now, 'cause I'm the Board Member. I wanna make sure that when we're finished with this, it's the people like Mark and Gloria and, and Jennifer, folks downstairs, Becky, and, and the whole staff, when they come to work, that, uh, they like coming here. It's a, it's a friendly place, and it's a, it's a modern place. I think we owe them that. But that's starting to sound like my campaign speech to get people to vote for the referendums. I'll leave it at that.
Great.
Okay?
Good update.
Uh, next month's maybe will be a little shorter, and we'll have some dynamo, dynamite plans to show you. What we wanna do is, we actually wanna, our plan is to have, have, put up some easels in here and so that people can come in and just see what the, what the floor plan will be.
That's a good idea.
Okay? Other items on here, aren't there?
Bail bond.
Yeah, last month, uh, we didn't have it on the agenda, so we couldn't approve it. It was, uh, maybe some of you recall, the, uh, increase in the bail bond, and it, uh, it reflects changes from the state. So, we were just asking to, uh, uh, Mark, did you want to say anything about, about that?
It's an increase of five dollars.
It's an increase of what, Mark?
Five dollars.
Five dollars?
Consistent with the state bond rate, uh, for the track.
And technically, it, the, the judge is asking for us to approve this?
Yes.
Okay. So, then the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the municipal, uh, the North Hudson Municipal Bond Schedule?
I'll move, make that motion.
I just, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
If you're...
On the document that's, that's in our books, it says effective December thirty-one, two thousand and five.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve.
Oh.
That's it?
Since two thousand and six, I'm winning.
Yeah.
Backside's oh-six.
I think that was in anticipation that it was gonna pass and work, or it should've said two thousand and six, I'm wrong.
Yeah.
But you can make that, uh, effective, I, I think it would become effective, that's what it's asking.
Effective today. Or maybe we better make it effective tomorrow. For those who get, yeah.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, North Hudson Municipal Bond Schedule as shown in our packet of information at this Board meeting.
And the new rates would be effective as of tomorrow? Okay. All right, we have a second?
Yep. I did.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay. Crosswalk at Webster and Helen Street.
You have the issue statement in front of you, uh, I'll make the motion, and if anybody has any questions about it. I'll move to approve the installation and painting of a crosswalk on Helen Street North, at Webster Street North, and placement of appropriate signage to the north and south.
Second. George, my question is, which side of the intersection is this, is this the northern part of the intersection or the southern?
Mark, do you wanna respond to that?
Sure.
One of the, uh, quest, issues that did come up was, uh, had to do with the cutout on the, uh, on the curb, so...
Right, and I think if you look at the issue statement under recommendation, it's to paint it from the northwest corner of the intersection across Helen Streets, it'd be the northwest corner where Webster Street comes into Helen Street, and then, uh, I guess perpendicular to the other curb. Uh, there's gonna be a slight jog that people are gonna have to walk in order to go up, up a driveway, but because of the, because of the ramp, uh, or the elevation to the sidewalk, we really didn't feel like we could put in a safe cutout there, and so they would just have to use the existing cutouts. But, I guess, in essence, it's just because that's a, an area that's well-traveled by a lot of schoolchildren and, and families walking to and from school, and of the two spots, that was the best, because it got it further away from the hill and the curve that is kind of in that, that area that makes, I guess, a line of sight difficult as you're coming, uh, from the south and from the north. Does that make sense with, kinda what you were asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was trying to figure the, the, uh, the east side of Helen Street, and where it comes in.
Okay, yeah, the east side of Helen Street, there's a, a home right on the corner, and there's a driveway that comes down, and it would probably be approximately six feet south of that, uh, so that driveway cutout. And I guess from the intersection with Bald Eagle Road, I would estimate it's probably about, uh, twenty feet south of that intersection, so, again, it, it wouldn't really make sense to do a cross, how do I put that, a diagonal crosswalk versus just a, a perpendicular, so that's what we're looking at through the Public Safety Committee.
Is that clear to those who will paint that, will you or...
I will not be painting it, but...
No, no, well, you'd be out there to...
I'm sure Mark Ekblad and I will have a discussion prior to that.
That's what I wanted to hear, I didn't figure you'd be out there with a brush.
That was a, so this really, I realized, it's a painting, it looks like staff was gonna do it, so there really is no cost here.
No.
Yeah, I think the only cost would be, uh, a couple of signs, which I would assume are well within Mark Ekblad's budget.
All right.
Uh, Mark, what would, what kind of signs would they be? Just, uh, children crossing, or, 'cause there's different kinds of crosswalk signs.
Right, and I, I think that's why the, the terminology is somewhat vague, is, is appropriate signage, uh, because I think Mark, there may be standards that Mark uses on, on crosswalks. Because it's, it's prox, it's in proximity to the school, but not necessarily immediately surrounding the school, I don't know that he can use the quote-unquote "school crossing" signs, uh, so he may just end up having to use the generic ones like we have down on Summer Street, uh, or on Cratley, up in that, up in those areas. So, I left that to Mark to decide, you know, what best, uh, fits that, that setting up there.
Very good.
Thanks.
Any question, any other questions for George on that topic? Okay, we already, we have motion and a second, so, uh, all in favor of doing the crosswalk and signees on Webster Street and Helen, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Public Welfare?
Did not meet, don't have nothing.
Park Board?
We did not meet, so no update either.
You took care of your business last one.
Yep.
You brought your boys from the summer.
We got our boys.
All right. Uh, new business, uh, nominations, I'm nominating Terry Felon for the Plan Commission. Ten-Ten Monroe Street. He's lived here in North Hudson for a long, long time. Very active in a number of things, most, most notably probably hockey, but he's been...
Oh, baseball, softball.
And baseball, a lot of the stuff, so I think he'll be a...
Ran against him a lot. Yep, his teams, we got, I'm gonna have a tough time here.
Think he'll be a good addition to the group, so. I would, uh, make a motion to, uh, appoint Terry Felon to the Ten-Ten Monroe Street, uh, to the Plan Commission effective immediately. Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Well...
Mark's not here.
We're gonna have to, can we adjourn?
Not yet, let me ask you something. On the, on the calendars that we have each month now, since the...
Ah, yes, yes, yes.
Since the, uh, BMC meets on a regular basis, could we, every Thursday from eight to nine, could we have that added to, uh, calendars?
By the way, uh, Jim?
Every Thursday at eight?
Eight AM.
Eight AM.
Uh, there's evidently a primary election on the twentieth, so that means we can't meet as a Public Works that night. Is there another time that would work with you?
Anytime we're fine, or we could, uh, come up with an alternate place to meet, if we wanted to, whatever's easiest.
Why don't we try the twenty-second? Thursday looks...
Same time?
Public Works, and I think we were doing that, was it six o'clock before? Yeah.
And then we'll be, uh, we'll have a fair, this month, in February, there will be one in March.
Are you looking at that, uh, referendum issue?
We literally had a little discussion about where we should go with it, so the committee will take it slow.
Okay, all right.
We're not in a big rush.
Well, then, absent any other comments, I would like to do the honor this month.
You have it, you'll probably be the only one you'll ever...
I know it, I, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I get a little misty-eyed when I get that privilege.
So, is Mark's place open yet?
I saw him in, I don't know that they got a lot of stuff moved in last...